Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this call meeting. It's a joint workshop between the City of Rockport and Ranses County Commissioners Court. Thank you for being here. We will have roll call for City of Rockport and for county to establish presence of a quorum or not, since there's no action being taken, it doesn't have to be. But we'll call for a roll call. Ward one, ward two not present. Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
We do have a quorum mayor present, so we have four members present.
Commissioner Cheney is absent. Commissioner Castroline is absent. Commissioner Russo?
Here.
Commissioner Dubnyk?
Here.
Judge Garza?
Here. We've got three out of five.
Thank you. Would you join us for pledge of allegiance, both state and United States flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Do the following: One nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and every right to struggle. On Texas land, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, where none can be invisible.
Thank you. Have seat. First item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. I have two folks who have turned in cards to speak. First, Mr. Andrew Kane.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Judge Fisher. Andrew Kane, 21, Los Angeles, Lakeview Drive. As a last thing, some of y'all want to hear, but I talked about at a workshop we had a little year ago, the city staff asked for a, uh, moratorium. And everybody in the staff had quotes, like, hold them out. Slow down growth. We need to increase our impact fees because we can't afford this. We had water concerns and slowing the growth down. So, a year ago, this whole council agreed on, we gotta slow the growth down and we gotta get impact fees up so we can take care of our needs for the city's infrastructure. Judge Garza, I cannot even believe you're entertaining this turs. You voted against the last turs that you could have a logical argument for the public benefits of that last turs, public space, parks, walkways, access to the water. This is like a turs because they want eighty percent of the property taxes for twenty-two years, but what's a public benefit? This land's not blighted. You're against that turs, this turs has no benefits. I can't even believe you're entertaining it. What this does in our market, it creates an unfair competitive advantage. What this bill is basically asking for is forty thousand dollars per lot, be paid for from property taxes over the next twenty-two years, but him getting eighty percent. So he wants basically a little over forty thousand per lot. D.R. Horton and Al Hogan are successfully building houses here. They're not getting forty thousand a lot, but you do this, he's got a competitive advantage on selling his houses faster than any other company for profit. If I'm selling my house in that two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollar range, this puts me at a disadvantage because he's got a forty thousand dollar system kick in into his investment, so he can sell for less. It's creating winners and losers. It's like a turs, I guess it's a developer agreement, so it's really confusing, but where's the blighted land? Last night, city council approved a guy wanting a variance. He's built a hundred and fifteen homes, I think, on thirty-six acres and hoping to build two-hundred thousand dollar houses, but he's not asking for any six, seven million dollar property taxes, eighty percent for the next eighty years, and he can somehow bring affordable housing or attainable housing to us. So why would we do this for this developer? When we did the turs, we talked about it, I sat here many times at both your places and said, why would any developer, this is a quote from months ago, why would any developer ever come here again, like they have since the history of time when it developed, and not ask y'all to pay for the development costs that they're used to? Because once you start giving turs away, here they come. We've got one already, quickly, asking for something that's never been asked for before. There's another one coming, he's gonna ask for his project to be one-hundred percent off the tax rolls for life. That's the next one we're gonna hear about. There's a lot coming, and I don't know why the citizens, you feel you need to use citizen money to hope we can create some attainable housing for certain people, but what's the government's position on using my taxpayer dollars to give forty thousand dollars each house in hopes that a teacher or a government worker or a first-time home buyer is gonna get it? We have no control, they do get it. I just want y'all to be careful what you're doing, because every time you take one step down the road, you're taking another step down the road and the next step down the road, and both your budgets are stretched. My taxes, what, twenty-seven percent? You did that one year? You're up fifty-three percent in three years? The city can't afford this. We've got other problems with our budgets and our finances that we can't afford to give eighty percent of our property taxes off a new subdivision for twenty-two years back to developer. I built my house, where's my eighty percent for twenty-two years? I pay my taxes, and they should too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Second one I have is Mr. Jeff Hutt. For the benefit of those of you that don't speak to the council meetings and so forth, I did not read the thing about citizens to be heard. Both these gentlemen have spoken to us before, let me read this little caption right quick, Jeff, before you start. Speak participation instructions are provided in writing beginning of the agenda. Texas Open Meetings Act permits members of the public and member of the government and body to raise subject that has not been included in notice of meeting. However, any discussion of the subject must be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a future meeting, and any response to a question posed by the city council is limited to either a statement of specific factual information or a recital of existing policy. Thank you, Mr. Hutt.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you for having these workshops. I do believe in radical transparency, and one thing I've learned in my current job is that radical transparency gives you better judgment, and without that sort of transparency, you don't have the information you need. Firstly, I'd like, before this, I'd like to say thank you to the four people here, like, all these meetings interrupt their lives and they have, like, these guys are the nine-to-fivers here, so I appreciate for what y'all do and the time that y'all take. Dear Ranses County Commissioners Court and City of Rockport, I request that the Commissioners Court and city officials require Lynn Engineering to submit an existing example of a proposed project for proof of concept in the state of Texas before entering into any tax abatement agreements with a contractor. It is crucial that local taxpayers assure the product's viability and benefits prior to shouldering the infrastructure cost. I request the following information be provided along with the proof of concept example. This is so y'all can judge it better. One, the specific tax abatements. A list of Texas tax abatement, uh, state statutes used in these past projects in the example, provide copies of the contracts, the resolutions, the ordinance, um, market viability and target home buyers. Provide that the, uh, prove that the proposed affordable housing contract will attract qualified buyers who will maintain long-term residency. Provide a clear description of the target demographic for this project, including the specific industry sectors, sectors, employment categories, and salary ranges of the potential buyers. Track record and capability. Demonstrate by providing letters of recommendation from county judges and mayors, a history of successful partnerships with local governments, showing positive outcomes for both the community and the developers. Impact on government budgets and homeowner property tax input. Provide examples of the economic impact the project will have on local government budgets. Provide clear evidence that the project will not result in increased property taxes for current homeowners, as this could cause financial strain on existing residents. I do believe this part could just be done by giving, uh, you know, how the tax rate went afterwards and what the budgets of the entities look like. Neighborhood composition and stability. Detail the composition of the example neighborhood program in Texas. This should include the makeup of original owners, second buyers, and rental properties within these neighborhoods. Demonstrate how the development will produce, promote long-term homeownership and prevent excessive turnover and instability. Crime and safety. Provide a five-year history of crime statistics within or around similar projects illustrating the safety and stability of the neighborhoods following similar affordable housing projects. And seven, public services, impact, fellow service impact. Present a detailed breakdown of the water and sewage services burden for the neighborhood. Demonstrate how the product will minimize its burden on local infrastructures. As elected officials, you're entrusted with safeguarding taxpayer interest, quality of life issues for us. It is your obligation to ensure that these critical questions are thoroughly answered before proceeding in any tax abatement agreement, not only this one, but going into the future. These, this due diligence is essential to make informed decisions that will benefit both the community and its residents in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutt. Next item on the agenda, Adams and discussion possible direction, attainable housing for the community, Judge Garza. Okay.
I have one from Patrick Kane. And yes, since he cannot be here, if I could read it into the record. So, Patrick Kane, eleven-twenty-three East Cedar Street, Rockport. There is no question, we need attainable housing for our first responders, teachers, and local workers. The question is, how do you help make that happen? There are multiple ways to do so, including approving higher-density developments, allowing accessory-use dwellings, and divesting unneeded city and county land holdings to allow infill. None of these actions requires taxpayers to subsidize attainable housing developments. In the last seven months, the city approved two-hundred-twenty-four single-family homes in higher-density development for attainable housing. These projects include, number one, forty-one homes approved on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four by rezoning commercial property to R-two as part of Kokomo Phase Six. Number two, sixty-eight homes approved on January fourteenth by rezoning the oasis from short-term rentals to residential. And number three, one-hundred-and-fifteen homes initially approved last night by rezoning thirty-six acres off Market Street from R-one to R-two. In the county's domain, let's not forget the over four-hundred attainable home sites at the Reserve on Copanobay. With over six-hundred new attainable housing units continuing online, do we need to rush to add more, especially at a six-point-six-million-dollar cost to the taxpayers? Definitely not. Today's offer by Lynn Development doesn't even make sense financially, given last night's developer request. That developer doesn't need a tax subsidy to build single-family homes that are attainable, hopefully in the two-hundred-thousand-dollar range, as stated in the March third planning and zoning meeting. They are also building thirty percent fewer homes on a larger tract of land, paying for a wastewater substation that will benefit the whole area, and they're still turning a profit. So why can't Lynn Development do the same instead of asking for a forty-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-six-dollar-per-lot tax subsidy for homes priced from two-hundred-fifty-thousand to three-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars? The city and county should first explore no-cost solutions to attainable housing before handing out tax dollars to private for-profit companies. Start with less restrictions on accessory-use dwellings, divesting unneeded property, considering concessions from developers towards an attainable housing fund, and keep approving the rezoning requests to allow for higher-density developments.
All right. And then, Ms. Kristin Underwood?
Mr. Lynn stated that he is designing this to provide attainable homes for the local essential workers. I am one of those essential workers. I do work for the county. I live on Kelly Lane, which looks to be the, going to be the main entrance to the subdivision. Kelly Lane is currently a dead-end street. At a hundred and sixty-three homes, an average of two vehicles per home, that will be at least three-hundred-and-twenty-six-plus vehicles every day driving past my home. My property is forty foot from the street, so this is going to be a lot of traffic and a lot of undue noise. And my home will probably become unsellable. Nobody's gonna want that kind of traffic right in front of their home. The main entrance, I believe, should be changed to the South Burton side, which is already considered one of the entrances. The multitude of streets that are a hundred-foot wide, sixteen of them, to be exact, that could funnel this traffic, all of these vehicles in and out, it could lead to them to Market Street, Business Thirty-Five, and also to Corpus Christi Street. There's also an easement that is next to Caroline's resale, that could be the second entrance or exit. There's a couple properties to the backside of that easement on the south end that are landlocked. They probably would like to have access to their property. At two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I don't believe these are, is attainable housing for the majority of Rockport and the Ranses County residents. Add in the Texas windstorm, homeowners insurance, and taxes, that's even more on top of just your typical house payment. I don't want to have the eighty percent of tax dollars coming from this subdivision to leave the, leave the community for the next twenty-five years. We need to keep those tax dollars here. I believe that there are other options than this subdivision and what Mr. Lynn is asking for. Thank you.
I was gonna flip-flop Ida number two and Ida number one. So we're just gonna start with Ida number two, and that's Mr. Stuart Lynn?
Good afternoon. Appreciate the time today, and I know this is gonna be a little bit of a repeat, but there's some interest of some, of people just wanna kinda go over it again. I wanna address some of the things. I appreciate all the citizens' concern. At the end of the day, we wanna be, that's our best plan and ambition, and we're not trying to do anything, um, not suppress the community. As I stated last time, I came here in two thousand and nine, born and raised in Mad amor County, hour and a half here, engineer by trade, and I made a statement that if I could start a business, simply say we go to the Woodlands Orphans League, that's how I was only starting my business fifteen years ago. Started a business here in Rockport, I had no idea what I was doing. Came here and I grew in the local, um, local lung company here, and, uh, they did all help me out, and so I just, I'm tied to this community and I enjoy it. At the end of the day, we wanna do what's best for the community. Now, this is not what's best, it's, uh, don't harm the health, it's not, uh...
Not a big deal, but I do wanna address a few things because, um, again, if you have all the information, you make a good decision, whatever it is, we can all live with the decision. The first thing, the two-hundred thousand on a house, I just met with that guy because I'm doing, I'm gonna be involved somewhat in that project. The house itself is gonna cost two-hundred thousand. The infrastructure is gonna cost about forty-five thousand. They're gonna sell the lot for seventy, so that house that they talked about for two-hundred thousand, that's just what it costs to build the house. That's no profit, no nothing. So you're looking at three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand on a, on a nine-hundred to a thousand square foot house. That's comparing apples and oranges. Another, another thing, talking about, for one, the proposed other projects, we definitely, we're doing this in Plasus. I'll be more than happy to give you all the information, the mayor, the council, we literally did this three years ago, and like you said, there's a lot of questions and people didn't know, um, what we're trying to do. Again, we wanted to make a difference in this small community in Plasus of five thousand people, so we did this. So we more than happy to, um, get that information to you guys. Another thing that's thrown in a lot is the tax abatements. These tax, these increases in taxes only for this particular area. No one else outside the area is paying for, for any of this, and it's not, it is a forty-thousand-dollar potential rebate if we build it two-hundred-and-ten, but that's over a period of twenty years. If you do that in some, any financial calculator, you're talking about a ten-or-so percent return. It's not in the whole scheme of things, it's not a whole lot of money, it's not a reason why I'm doing this. I'm not making, getting forty thousand dollars back over twenty years is not, does not make good financial sense. So, um, the biggest thing, and I appreciate the Kelly Lane, we, we, I put that in, on Kelly Lane in the beginning because that was the only road that had access. I was able to get with the previous owner next to the Dollar Store, and he granted us a fifty-foot easement, so that main, the main entrance will go, um, right next to the Dollar Store, which I think is a much better entrance anyway, and so there will be no, not an entrance, not an exit, nothing will go down Kelly Lane, so that will take care of that. With that, just wanna go over a few things. When we talked last, there was a few concerns. One was, how could you try to keep having just tons of investors coming in and investing and this not be attainable housing, it'd be more of an investment-type community? So I wanna speak a little bit about that, and then also talk about what, um, wanted some more detail as far as what the reimbursement would look like. And so with that, I'd like to just kinda go over, go over some of this, and I'm not the best at this, so, there you go. So, as I mentioned, I'm Stuart Lynn, came here in Rockport, um, two thousand and nine, ten, so fourteen, fifteen years ago. One thing that we prioritize, I'm not, I'm engineered by trade, so yes, I fell in love with development because it's truly making a difference, and you have a bit of the engineering component and construction component and also development, so we can mitigate our risk and have opportunities to do this. A typical, um, developer can't always do this because, again, the margins are very, very, um, thin, and literally the only reason we're doing this is, I started this business here in Rockport, Brandy's been working with me since pretty much the very beginning, she's on quite a few of the committees, met with Jeff, they said, the housing study said they needed attainable housing, and so here we are. So, at the end of the day, I'm not here trying to promote this to make a bunch of money, I'm trying to be part of the solution, and if we are, that's great, and if we're not, that's great too. Mission and vision, we talked about that last time, our, um, unique advantage is a little bit low, so you can't receive it. Again, as I discussed, we're not just an engineer, um, by trade, we're engineering, new development, and also, um, construction, so we can do all those pretty much in-house, have a few subs, but we do so much work in other areas, we're able to bring those subs here to save, to save a little money where we can. Project overview, that's, uh, the project there, it's getting right behind the Dollar Store on Market Street, um, about thirty-three, thirty-three acres. Looking at doing twelve-hundred to seventeen-hundred square foot, I think the lowest, uh, square footage on the house we have is eleven-hundred-and-eighty-three, so just slightly under twelve-hundred, uh, square feet, and about a hundred and sixty-three lots is what we're looking at right now. This is the, uh, just the very conceptual layout that we use just to run the numbers, and as you can see, that entrance does show on Kelly Lane, that'll be moved, um, uh, let's see, north, it'll be moved, uh, east, so, um, directly behind the Dollar Store, so there will be no access to, uh, to Kelly Lane on there, and then we'll have an exit, as mentioned, over there on the, the top right-hand corner. Again, we talked about all this, and it's been mentioned, this is for the essential worker, this is for the local, um, whether it's city, county-type worker, teachers, any of those, and again, the same thing we've done in Plasus, and more importantly, in Bay City, is we offered some incentive, and we actually donated some money, each lot we sold, we donated to the, uh, the school district there for the teacher fund to help decorate their classrooms and those things, so obviously we do something similar, similar to that. The big thing I wanna spend a few minutes on, and then wanna open up to any and all questions, is some of the things, some of the issues that we talked about last time, and this is one, and obviously you don't have to do all of these, but these are some good, um, in our research, some ways that you can kinda mitigate having a bunch of investors in these, and that's on, I'm not sure what page it is in your packet, but it's here, Assuring Resident Homeownership. And you probably wouldn't do, we probably wouldn't do all of these, but we could definitely do some, and it would be part of the agreement. We would not, um, y'all would not sign an agreement until these were set in stone, and, I couldn't, but you just, so let me open this up so I can, uh, read, but, one, resident first, a new homeowner required to occupy a home for at least two years before they're eligible for rental. That's one of the things, and some of these can be in the CCR, some can be in the HOA documents, some can be part of the, um, part of the deed. Another thing, additional monthly dues, there's something they do in some communities, they charge extra if you're renting, if you're in the house, so here, you know, two-hundred-dollar rental is one that we, we found. Mandatory adherence to the HOA's rental maintenance schedule, so if you're gonna rent that, rent the house, you have to pay a certain fee to the HOA, which is to make sure that the yard's maintained, everything's done properly, and you're not investing in a house and just living three states away and just letting it, um, letting it go. A few others, annual renter, annual rental license requirement from the HOA board for all new and existing. One, a couple down from that, have a set amount where you can only have twenty percent of the entire subdivision can be rental, and once you reach that max number, the, you can't give any more permits to have rentals, and then once that drops and someone sells it and it's a full-time buyer, well then maybe one or two or more, whatever, can, um, start renting, but that's, um, one that we found also. Another six-month occupancy or vacancy mandate before a home can be rented, so you can have it to where, if it was, if there was vacant for six months, they moved away and got another job, and it was literally vacant for six months, well then it can go into a rental pool, but until it's vacant for six months, which means they have to have some type, but not a hardship so much, but they gotta have a real reason to want to invest, uh, to rent it out. And then, a last one, have some strict HOA approval requirements for all rental agreements. So, again, you probably wouldn't do all of those, but you could cherry pick a few that make the biggest impact and, and use those as part of your HOA, your CCRs, and your deed, and so, again, it doesn't do us any advantage to sell to, um, investors, so whatever we can do that makes sense, we're definitely open to that. Next page, these are some two very specific ones that we've done exactly. The Valor Park is actually a turs. The Pelican Place is one-hundred percent of a three-eighty agreement, which in your case is a little better, that you're doing, could potentially do a three-eighty and a three-eighty-one. Pelican Place is one-hundred percent, um, funded by the three-eighty, so the county's not putting in, so the cities, their increase in payroll taxes, still eighty percent, just as we're proposing here, would be, is going towards payback for the infrastructure, but the city in that case is, a hundred percent of that eighty percent is going to pay back versus having the county component as well, which helps both because now you aren't funding it a hundred percent, pardon your eighty percent, it's not all alone. Lastly, again, Pelican Place, these are some actual houses that we're doing there in Pelican and Plasus. We started that project at seventy, seventy lots, and we're right about in the high twenties right now. Did an open house and had a few, we're looking at doing the same thing in Point Comfort, and some of the, the mayor and one of the councilmen went down, and was that, I know it's a little far for y'all to drive down to Plasus, but we're more than happy to, um, to, uh, to show you that property as well, and give you any of the contacts that we have for that. And then, um, last thing, now, we updated, did we update existing homes for sale again, like we did last time? This is the third iteration, if you remember, if you'll go to existing homes for sale, it's probably two more slides, I think, from, oh, I'm doing one. Right here? We first met with Jeffrey, um, two meetings ago, we had this here, we updated it last time, and now here's another update. Each time we do this, we just go on the hard and just see to make sure there is a, a market for it. The last thing we wanna do is come up here and push something that really isn't something that, um, is required or needed. These are, as of probably in the last week, if not, um, early this week, what is on the MLS in this price range that we're talking about. So, as you can see, most of them that are on there are sold. There is one that's a hundred and three thirty, a hundred and thirty-three dollars a square foot, it was built in nineteen sixty-five. The other one, built in nineteen eighty, price just dropped, it was two-sixty-five, they dropped it to two-forty-nine. And thinking, and then there's two of them there at the very bottom that are, um, slightly over two-hundred-and-ten dollars a square foot, which is what we're proposing to be, that were built in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eleven. So, that is, um, a most recent, as of a few days ago. The other we talked about, it's, um, infrastructure, our cost, our estimated cost to six-point-five to do the hundred and fifteen, um, lots, somewhere around forty to forty-five, I think it's forty-five thousand, a, a lot. And what, um, spend a few minutes talking about this, and then I will be done and open up the questions. Our proposal is building it for two-hundred-and-ten dollars a square foot. We can do that and not go in the hole, make a little bit of money, and, um, if we develop this fast enough with having a proper, um, building in the timeframe allotted, um, we can get part of that back, um, through the three-eighty and three-eighty-one. And so, just a quick example, um, here is, I'll spend a little bit here, in this case, the three-eighty, and if we had a three-eighty and a three-eighty-one, and eighty percent of it went to payback the infrastructure, you're still, you're looking at, I think, twenty, twenty-two years is whenever it would fully, um, pay back that, that investment, so it's not something that's gonna get back right away, and that's only provided that we finish this out in five years. And so, in talking to the county judge and the city manager, it was important to have some stipulations to where we're not just coming in saying, okay, we wanna build a bunch of houses, and if it takes us twenty years to build them, we wanna get money back on it, that's not our, um, what we're willing to do is have a five-year development period, we develop it for five years, and if we sell, only sell fifty in five years, that's all we can potentially get reimbursed for. Anything after five years, day one after that, is not eligible for reimbursement. That way you have a specific timeframe, you know you're not gonna be on the hook for, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years of a potential three-eighty or three-eighty-one. The development period is only for five years, and then, um, depending on how much we get designed and, um, built and sold, will determine, um, the, uh, the reimbursement. Finally, just reimbursement rate, and I think it's important for the city and the county to have some stipulations, you still wanna blank check and say, all right, this guy comes in and builds and he sells them for over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, depending on the square footage, so we do it based on, uh, price per square foot. Two-hundred-and-ten dollars a square foot is the base, if we did that, then a hundred percent of that eighty percent would go to pay down, um, the infrastructure costs, and there's a graduated scale, two-hundred-and-twenty, you only get ninety percent of that eighty percent. And as a graduated skill, two hundred and twenty, you only get ninety percent of that eighty percent all the way down. If you get over two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, two fifty-one, zero. So if we go in there and we're having a hard time selling, and we have to sell because the demand is what it is, and we can't sell houses, that's all on us, or on us as land development, and we have to, the only house we can sell is a five hundred thousand dollar house, okay, we get zero percent. No harm, no foul, no taxes are going to pay for any of the infrastructure, then development gets zero percent, zero out of that. So I think that's a very good way to look at it, to where you as a city and the county are not, you have some very strict stipulations on what is paid back and what percentage of that is. With that, I'd like to answer, there's some appendix, and there's some deeper stuff as far as if we want to get in the weeds on specific numbers and those things. But, and that was what I just discussed right there, as far as the two-ten to two-fifty a square foot. With that, I'd love to answer any questions, or if there's anything that you want us to research and get back to you on. Again, I'll say this, at the end of the day, we want to be part of the solution. This is not Stuart Lynn trying to come in here and shove this down anybody's throat. I've already purchased the land, I've closed on it, I'm going to develop the land, one way or the other. I think this is a good win-win for everyone, but at the end of the day, that's not what the city or the county wants. I just need to know so that we can go more, more traditional direction. One thing, I know y'all are very familiar with the TERS because y'all have already approved one, so I don't need to go on this. But this is just a quick little slide that we use anytime we're doing three-eighty or three-eighty-one or TERS. And it just says, you know, the base, the base value is in the gray zone, the very low zone there. And if nothing happens, then the taxes are going to stay the same, so it is what it is. But with the increase, twenty percent would stay in the green, which is to the city and the county, whatever that amount is. And eighty percent, the blue, would be, go towards help pay back the infrastructure. And then once it's all paid at the end of the term, or when it's paid back, then a hundred percent of that goes back to the respective entities, the city and the county and that. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions or anything, any comment?
I have some, can you go back to the reimbursement rate table?
Yes, ma'am. This one here?
Okay, so by what you were saying, if you achieve the two hundred and ten per square foot, you'd get reimbursed at a hundred percent of the eighty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that would make the house cost two hundred and forty-seven thousand and some change, correct?
Depending on the square footage, but yeah, on that.
We're at two hundred and ten price per square foot would equal two hundred and forty-seven and some change. Correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, it depends what square footage, if you have a twelve hundred square foot house, it would be twelve hundred times two-ten of the thirteen hundred square foot, thirteen times two-ten, but that's about, that's about.
So we'll go off of the approximation from the two slides previous where you did eleven hundred and seventy-eight.
That's where that number came from, yes, ma'am.
So let's go based on that number for each home. Now, if you, what's the intention of increasing to two-ten, two-thirty, is that?
There, there's not intention, it's just if for some reason, say, the twelve hundred square foot house is not selling well because people want a bigger house, and they want a fourteen hundred square foot house, and I have to sell it for, you know, more money, then instead of having a two-ten or nothing, it's some graduated.
So say we sell it for two-thirty because of the market, that then is increasing that house to two hundred and seventy thousand, that's not attainable housing.
That's right, and that's why, okay, that's, so whatever that number is, and these percents, we just had to start with something.
My concern is this three-eighty, three-eighty-one agreement is contingent upon completion of the development, but then also the market at the time of completion. Correct?
What do you mean by that?
So if you can't sell a house at two hundred and ten square, or two hundred and ten dollars per square foot at the eleven seventy-eight.
Right.
Which is affordable, we look at that price of two, two hundred and forty-seven thousand and some change. We look at that and we say, this seems affordable. But if you can't achieve that sell and close that sell, then we're going to be ticking that sell price up per square foot. Say we get to two-thirty, it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollar home. Is that affordable? And then Ms. Underwood stated, everything monetary additions onto that mortgage.
Right, so yeah, that number, if it makes sense for that to be sixty percent or fifty percent or zero percent, that's fine. We just need to come up to what dollar comes when it makes sense. And if it doesn't, if you think affordable housing is only going to be, the thing is, affordable housing is not just a price point. It's also if you have a bigger family and they need more than a three-bedroom, two-bath, they probably don't need a twelve hundred, they may need a fourteen hundred. So you take that same square footage price, it obviously increases the price, but it's also, if you have a bigger family, then, you know, maybe both people, most parents are working. And so maybe there's, there's different price points based on size of the house. And that's why I think it makes more sense to do a square footage price because that's uniform across everything. If you just pick a straight price, say two hundred and fifty, well then I could just do what the other guy's doing and build an eight hundred square foot house and sell it for two fifty. I'd make way more money, but that eight hundred square foot is not the house that the typical family is going to build, or what needs to live in. So, and all these numbers, I mean, whatever, but we can sit down and, you know, what makes sense makes sense. If it's only two-ten, and you say, you know what, I only want to pay back a hundred percent of the eighty if it's two-ten, if it's two-eleven, we don't want to pay anything back, then we just need to run the numbers and just see how that makes sense. And have a good, big enough escalator, based on the CPI cost, if cost does go up, then obviously, that's all going to, if costs go up, then, you know, cost of living goes up, everything else goes up, income's supposed to rise. So whatever, none of this is set in stone, it's just, again, a starting point to have these conversations.
This reimbursement rate, is it based basically on that forty thousand roughly per lot? Is that how that's tied to this?
It's based on the actual cost of what the infrastructure is. So you don't, obviously don't re, we have it at six point five million. Honestly, I think I can get it cheaper because I think I can get my guys to come all the way from Bay City. But this is what the current rate as far as the local contractors, we've bid it out to have a rough idea. But it's whatever it is, so if it's six point five and it comes in at six million, well then you'd only obviously reimburse. I have to have three bids, and that's the lowest bid, unless y'all approve different, and it's only based on that number.
And if you don't do a hundred percent build out in five years, whatever portion, percentage is built out, that will, that will adjust the TERS.
That caps it, that's right. So just for easy number, it's six point five, and I only got fifty percent sold, fifty percent built, then you're only talking about half of six, three point two-five or whatever.
Mr. Lynn, what, on the, the year of the three-eighty, proposed three-eighty, three-eighty-one agreements, we're pushed out to twenty-two years. What is the advantage, disadvantage of pushing it out so, so many years versus, you know, a ten-year or fifteen-year or something less, less than Lynn in terms?
So right, on the page right, let's see, on where the reimbursement rate is, the page before that is, it's a quick calculation. If you look at year number ten, the value is, just say we capped it at year ten. There would be one, one million from the, the three-eighty, which is the city, and eight hundred and fifty-eight. So one point eight would all, there would be reimbursed on year ten. So the reason we had twenty-two, because if you take the six point five million for the infrastructure, down at year twenty-two, if you add three point four and two point eight, that's right about six point five. So it would take twenty-two years to pay, pay that back, provided we did a hundred percent in five years, and provided that we did them all at two-ten or less. And that'd be the eighty percent, makes that six point, goes together, eighty percent.
Yes, have we looked at other, other, other options other than the three-eighty, three-eighty-one agreements to have some kind of public-private participation, still make the project viable, but not, not a twenty-two-year abatement? Is there, are there other opportunities out there?
Not that we personally done it, we done the three-eighty, three-eighty-one, done the TERS. Yeah, and maybe, this is eighty percent, because that way twenty percent does go to the, if you did a hundred percent, then obviously that would lower it. But then there's no, that twenty percent, I think, is good for the city and the county to get, to just cover the basic cost as we're getting paid back. But we're open to, again, this is, this is what I'm familiar with doing, this is what we've done in the past, and this is what we've talked about with Jeff and then the county and the city. So we're open to anything.
Yeah, I just, over the last year, we've looked at the community's goal for attainable housing. We've tried to look at the toolbox of different programs that are there that could actually help leverage private sector investment with public sector improvement, and trying to address the actual target markets of what we're looking at for being able to house our workforce. So there's a laundry list of programs from public facility corporations, housing finance corporations, the three-eighty, three-eighty-one, the TERSes. And then a lot of the programs aren't even on the hit list for us because they're part of the Texas Department of Community Housing Affairs. With Aransas County and Rockport being non-entitlement cities and counties, it's not the same as some of the bigger cities where they're a direct entitlement city or county. They get direct allocations from HUD from, through TDHCA as it comes down from the federal and the state. So those tools aren't on the books. The, I agree wholeheartedly with the non-financial incentives, per se, in terms of density and setbacks and all of those things. But it, it's kind of a laundry list. So what we've tried to do is facilitate evaluating all of these various programs and trying to come up with the right mix in terms of programs that could help to bring this forward. And I think with what wind development is proposing, and specifically to the price point with the three-eighty, three-eighty-one, yes, it's very similar to a TERS, but it's not a TERS. It absolutely is not a tax abatement, and we need to stop using those terms interchangeably because they're different. But with this, should you decide that you want to explore it a step further and actually get into the creation of a potential development agreement, then it would be up to you as the elected leadership to negotiate what that development agreement is. And that's where you have the power to protect what the city's interest, what the county's interest, what the community's interest is, in terms of what you would expect from the development, and what the price points would be, and what the payback provisions would be in the development of that. Again, should you choose to go forward.
Are there any tax credits available for development like this through HUD?
There are, and I, I think that's one of the things that came up with the, when the Pearl Point project was converted over to redevelopment, and they came and asked you for permission to make the, the project accessible to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, or housing tax credits, they have bond programs at four and nine percent. There are programs that they can take advantage of for a project like we're talking here, when it's homeownership-based. That becomes much, much harder to put together. And so.
Jeff, how, how does a long-term projected increase in property values, how does that affect the tax base and then the payout if we use a three-eighty-one?
So I think as you look, and as we get into the weeds with regard to the authorization schedule that Lynn has put together, Mr. Lynn has put together, I think he's put a fairly conservative estimate in terms of what the growth in the tax rate will be, and what the interest rates and all of those factors. I think with what his numbers are, it could potentially pay off faster. But I think all of that will go into as we start to actually look at the formation of the development agreement, figuring out where your comfort level is in terms of. The, the flip side of it is, as Stuart alluded to, you constrict his development timeframe to a five-year term, conceptionally, just for argumentative purposes. That means he has to come in and build it, put all the infrastructure up front. Remember, what we're talking about here is a project where we're looking, where he's looking for a five, six million dollar reimbursement on infrastructure. His total project cost is going to be thirty million dollars, give or take whatever, because it doesn't include all of the construction costs for the units and what have you. So as we look at that public infrastructure, putting some, we call them clawback provisions, but putting some conditions within that development agreement to hold his feet to the fire, to enhance the return on investment that you're getting in terms of, you know, the public benefit for this type of project, as we talked with the school district about, and what their priority that they've shared with me is. They need housing for teachers, and they need housing that teachers can afford, so we stop losing them, not just from living here, but from working here. And so that's where we have to, we have some flexibility as we actually get into putting together what that development agreement would include, and what you feel comfortable with. And then it's up to you, Mr. Lynn, to decide whether or not, you know, if this is a straight-up private market deal, there's no reason for incentives. There's no reason to talk about a public partner partnership. But if the developer is attempting to address a need that's been expressed in the community, then that's where it's your decision as to whether or not that justifies an equitable partnership between the parties.
I, I think I could be more inclined to support it if, if I know what we could get, something that doesn't just support this development. You know, the infrastructure, the, the water, sewer gap, you know, whatever, whatever our needs are for this development, if we could expand it. I'm not asking to go all the way to South County line, but, you know, cert, to get develop, uh, infrastructure in that area that would serve us, not just, not just this one.
And there is about seven hundred thousand of that six point five, maybe a little bit more, but is to run a line all the way from this property to the lift station, upsize that lift station in Fort Spain, and there's a couple of blocks that are empty that those could all be served. So it's, it's not doing a quarter of the town, but there is, again, over ten percent of the cost is offsite bringing it to here. So obviously, we need it, but then also it'd help, you know, for instance, we're going to run a, a big line from Market Street all the way down to Iris. We have Crowley wants to develop that, and so that'll all need infrastructure, so that's all going to be in place as well. Not to mention the sewers going from the southernmost priest property all the way to the lift station, about four blocks. And so there's literally four blocks and upgrading that lift station there, which I think the lift station is compatible with now, but it's going to be increased. So that, that would, any, any growth in that area is all encompassed for. We did all that through the, y'all's engineer in Corpus, ran all those numbers.
And city staff.
And city staff.
And true that was my concern, that I haven't heard anything outside of the area. I'm going to even give a thought, second thought to having to give any kind of tax, you know, forgiveness or anything. But I want it to benefit more than just the little area or the developer. I want it to, as the area in South Rockport has, you know, known issues and, you know, any help they can get aside that with their, you know, flooding and with their water intake over there, that is going to be something that I think even the commissioners and the city council all would be more inclined to help, you know, be in favor of anything on that side of it. I'm sorry, I was not here at the other meeting, so I'm sorry if this are asked, like, so why, with Stephanie's question, I think what she was trying to hear too, why are we not doing maybe smaller lots and to lower that square footage amount down? So then we're not just going out there and going, okay, well, if someone comes in and is willing to pay three hundred thousand, then the families that are here are, that are our workers, what we're building this for, are not giving the opportunity to have these housing. What is the motive of your size of lots? Why did you not look at smaller lots and maybe just making it a set way? So then the people that are here are going to be able to afford it, as noted, they're able to afford it in the long run.
Yeah, and to, Stephanie, we, we're talking about worst-case scenario. The lots, we are having the lots, we'd have to actually get it rezoned to our one or two that makes it fifty by hundred lots. So those are the smallest lots you can do. So it'd be really hard to do a seventeen, again, I want to address, I want to, again, I try to be over-conservative and over, I definitely don't want to overpromise and deliver, I've seen that too many times. But you really, you'd have a hard time building a seventeen hundred, two thousand square foot house on a fifty by hundred lot. So we're somewhat capped, I guess I could do a two-story or something, but that's.
Well, why don't we keep it to a smaller house, like the eleven forty-seven is what you were saying for the two hundred and forty-seven thousand? Why, I know we can change the agreement, but when we're speaking and we're going to be putting this out there to the citizens and everything, we want to make sure that, okay, well, we're not going to even try to go to a higher level or try to make sure that it's not going to be attainable. Because I think that's the last, um, three-eighty agreement that we had, was that it was supposed to be one thing, and it turned into another, and we do not want that happening again. So we want to make very clear that we, we have to make our choices very clear about what we want out of this, if it's even going to be, you know, come to fruition and to the citizens.
Yeah, and part of the issue is trying to figure out enough of the potential scenarios before they happen. But we love, and we want to only build eleven hundred seventy-eight square foot house because it's easier to turn, it's easier to sell a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house than a three fifty. But, you know, if we get into it, and for some reason, those houses, you know, the more, whatever, they want a thirteen hundred square foot house, we're trying to have some kind of provision that we can still get, because our costs are still the same, a little bit more for an extra hundred square feet. But as it, so it's, it's a balance, but, I mean, I hear you, we want to build a twelve hundred square foot house, and I hope that's all we have to build.
Just keep in mind, that's going to be something that's going to be just, I know in my own thought, is that make sure that you keep it actually attainable and not just keep adding more so you can get the dollar up or someone wants more. There's other houses they can buy for two thousand square feet. If we're going to have this area and have it for their size, and for the people that need to afford, that want to afford that amount, we need to make sure that we keep it for them. Like, that's just where my concern goes.
Now, very good, so in part of it, the two, the two-ten is, so I don't make any more money building a thirteen hundred square foot house than a twelve hundred, because it's still, the, the price per square foot is still set. If anything, I could actually lose something, but still, it's, I'm not, I'm not making any more money, but I do agree that price is going up and that defeats the purpose. So at some point, you know, it doesn't make sense to sell a four hundred thousand dollar house, even if it's five thousand square feet, you do it for ninety dollars a square. you know, it doesn't make sense to sell a four hundred thousand dollar house, even if it's five thousand square feet, you do it for ninety dollars a square foot. That's as cheap as house you can get, but you can't afford a four hundred fifty thousand dollar house. Who cares how cheap per square foot it is?
One of the things too, just and we talked about this in the first workshop a little bit. Part of what I give Stuart credit for is he came in and read what our housing assessment indicated. He looked at what the survey responses were from the survey that we did with employers and with folks that were looking for housing. The people that responded to that were desirous that they would choose to live in Rockport if they could find an attainable priced home with the types of amenities that are comparable to other areas. But it's incredibly important to realize there's not going to be, this project is not going to fix attainable housing for Aransas County. This is one shot at trying to get a project below the price band to get between that two fifty to three fifty price band to see if we can fill that need. There's going to be other price band approaches that we have to look at. My biggest concern when you have a community where seventy-five percent of the workforce is service sector, this isn't attainable housing for the service sector. We're going to have to continue looking at tools and strategies and for all the people that say there's easier ways to do it, I'm open to any idea, suggestions or strategies as to how we make it happen. This is just one approach for a specific opportunity to get below what ninety, ninety-five percent of the existing housing that's in planned development is currently within Aransas County.
How does the cost for home here compare to the homes you did in subdivisions in Palacios and Bay City?
The ones in Palacios are two, two twenty-five on average. And look, the difference between the two twenty-five and the two fifty is literally the land cost.
Okay. And, and then what percentage is the build out in Palacios and in Bay City?
Uh, Palacios is about forty percent and Bay City, a hundred percent of those lots are sold. I'm not building those houses in Bay City. I sold those to Lennar and Century to.
In Palacios, what's the median income of the people that are buying houses so far?
Can you go ahead and tell me?
Less than Rockport, I bet we wouldn't have been.
Yeah. I have to understand too, the cost of your developers much, much less because the land costs less. I mean, there's a lot of things lower.
And that's really the difference. The two twenty-five.
The median income is because Rockport, really our median income for the people that need this is not what you would have in Portland or places like that. So I'm wondering how that compares to what you're seeing.
The median income in Palacios is much lower than Rockport.
What's that?
Median income in Palacios is much lower than Rockport. I'd have to pull up that stat.
It is much lower in Palacios now.
Palacios is much lower than Rockport, yes.
What is your, my girl, what do you believe is the Rockport is, the median income?
I haven't been correct me if I'm wrong, I never looked it up today.
You know those numbers, Jeff?
I, I do, but what I'm thinking is maybe we transition to the next topic just to move your time so we can keep this moving and get you out of here in a reasonable hour. But we actually have the area median income for Galveston County within the Housing Finance Corporation presentation. And I think if we let them, they can run through that for you just to give you the comparables of what a random county numbers are and what that looks like. Thank you. Yes. And let me just say thank you all. I know that meetings are.
Jeff, before we go on, can we take a quick break?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Y'all are good.
Right.
All right, we're gonna go back and open session, back to the meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, honorable.
Elected leaders of our community, I do have to say thank you. I know you all have meetings, unbelievable meetings, so thank you for taking the time to be here today. I greatly, greatly appreciate it. And it's, I'm excited that at least we're moving the ball down the field, so thank you for your leadership on that. And we'll see where we go. What I'd like to do now is introduce two people that I've been working with for some time. Rachel Jensen with the Chapman Legal Firm and Megan Ramesh from Hilltop Securities. Hilltop Securities is a group that I have a pretty good awareness of from my time in the Houston Galveston region. Hilltop is a significant player in the government financing sector, municipal bonds, working with communities. As we started looking for alternative programs, I went to TDHCA to look at their, when we, when I wanted to look at the housing finance corporations, I went through information they had. And when I looked at the list of housing finance corporations across the state of Texas, over eighty percent of those housing finance corporations that are in existence have Hilltop Securities listed as their secondary point of contact. They have extensive experience in housing finance corporations. And what I've asked Rachel and Megan to do today is just give you that thousand-foot view. What is a housing finance corporation? How does it work? How could it benefit us as a community talking about attainable housing? So, thank you all for coming down today.
Hello, good evening all. Thank you all for having us today. So, I'm Megan Ramesh. I'm with Hilltop Securities. So, my, my team and I represents about thirty-five to forty active HFCs across the state of Texas. One of them actually out in Florida. Majority of the work is spread out across the, the state of Texas. And I'll turn it over to my partner here, Trina.
Hi, and I'm Rachel Jensen. Appreciate the introduction from Jeff. And we work with Hilltop across the state of Texas on, with a number of primarily housing finance corporations, some public facility corporations, but you know, certainly pleased to, to be here and present this information. There's a lot of details in the slides, but we'll try to keep it high level and, and brief. And then happy to, you know, take your questions. But as Jeff said, he considers this one tool that might be beneficial for the community here. And Chapman and Hilltop do this work across the state, so we're happy to, you know, just be here and, and share a little bit about how it works.
Yeah, absolutely. We passed out a PowerPoint presentation, kind of slide. We certainly don't want to go into all the nitty-gritty detail, but just kind of a high level. You know, as we've been talking about the private-public partnerships, you know, what then entails in the single-family world, we'll kind of go over that in the, the housing finance corporation world. So, you know, with these partnerships, you know, obviously there needs to be incentive for, for both parties for it to make sense. You know, we'll kind of touch base on the, the first slide, you know. What does it mean for the developer? Why would the developer want to be interested in this, proceeding this route? So, when, under state statute, housing finance corporation and, and all the property it owns, it's exempt from licensing fees, recording fees, ad verum taxes, sales tax exemptions on material if they're in the role as a general contractor. So, there's various savings that can be captured with the development in order to reach the affordable components of, of, of the rents. The, you know, having the developer partner with a housing finance corporation also can kind of bridge the gap of communication with the, the community. And that kind of under, you know, help that partnership establish what does the community want? How can the developer kind of achieve that and have that kind of inside voice in that partnership kind of established? Now, we talked a little bit about, you know, tax credits. So, there was a question there. So, we have the nine percent, the four percent tax credits that are issued through the state agency, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, also known as TDHCA. With the four percent tax credits, there's also private activity bonds that are issued with the assistance of the housing finance corporation. And then there's also the kind of conventional financing way where there's no tax credits involved, no tax-exempt bonds. The HFC is in the partnership to allow for the previous ad verum, you know, save, tax savings, sales tax savings, those, those types of savings. So, there's a variety of ways of, you know, the participation of the housing finance corporation. And then, most importantly, you know, why would y'all be interested in? And it's, you know, one of the ways, kind of like I just mentioned, there's that partnership with the developer. You as a community has more say into what you all want to see in this multifamily community or development. You know, whether it's, you know, more affordability, social services being offered for, for the residents. You know, if you, if there's issues with, with the property and, you know, residents are complaining, you know, they'll probably reach out to you and you can have more say and control of, of the, you know, quality of life of those residents. Also, there's a financial incentive, though it is a hundred percent property tax exemption on the property, there's various fees that the housing finance would claw back per se. So, the fees can, can vary in upfront fees, ongoing annual fees, fees at the time of a sale of the property or a refinance of property. So, that's kind of Hilltop's role in negotiating, you know, what would be appropriate for the, for the community and still making the, the multifamily development still feasible.
So, I can talk a little bit about, and this may be a, a few steps early, but just in terms of setting this up, if that's something that you would choose to do. So, as Megan mentioned, the housing finance corporation is set up under state statute. There's chapter three ninety-four of the Texas Local Government Code that provides for this as, you know, a public interest in creating housing for families of low and moderate income. So, if this is something that you chose to move forward and do, as for example, the Aransas County Housing Finance Corporation, the, the county commissioners would take action on a resolution to approve it. And then there would be articles of incorporation filed with the Secretary of State. And that's something that, you know, Chapman can help prepare the, the paperwork and do. And then there would be an initial board of directors appointed. It's optional to have the elected body of the local government that is forming the HFC be also functioning as the board of directors, or sometimes there's a separate board of directors that's chosen. It just, you know, depends on local preferences. And then that board of directors would meet as needed to handle any ongoing business. So, just setting up the housing finance corporation in of itself doesn't commit you to a particular project or to any kind of, you know, developments. But then, under the powers and authority of that housing finance corporation, you could entertain proposals from developers and, you know, move forward with the process like Megan said of, you know, negotiating specific projects and what the kind of public benefit return would be. So, there's a lot more detail in the next couple of slides, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I'll just kind of keep moving on to really, you know, some of what Megan touched on, what the housing finance corporation can do. So, it can make contracts, so that would include, you know, entering into the various agreements that would be part of a multifamily housing development where it would be in the, the partnership and ownership structure of usually, you know, there's a, a limited liability company or a limited partnership that is set up to own the development. So, the housing finance corporation would have an ownership in that. And it owns the land that the, the project would be constructed on. Or if the project is already in existence, if it's like a rehabilitation project, then it would own the land underlying that development. It's authorized to issue notes and bonds. So, some housing finance corporations in the state are issuers of bonds. And then they can participate in that four percent low-income housing tax credit program through TDHCA that Megan mentioned. Other HFCs don't issue bonds and they might just do conventionally financed programs where, you know, the, the developer partners with a lender and brings in just conventional financing. And the, the tax abatement that the HFC brings into the project is part of the overall puzzle and making it, you know, pencil so that the development can actually move forward. So, one of the other statutory requirements is that. Yes, sir. Oh, sure, certainly. So, that, what I was just describing is on slide six in terms of the powers that the housing finance corporation has. And then if we, I can just chime in really quick, since we're discussing, you know, issuing bonds, these are not general obligation bonds. These are revenue bonds, so it's not an obligation of the county, city, any other taxing entity. So, they're backed by the, the revenues of the project and the, you know, responsible party. You know, we documented and Chapman's role is documented where the responsible party is the borrower, AKA developer. So, there's no, there's no really any obligation of the county, city, any housing finance corporation for the repayment of, of principal and interest of those bonds.
Okay, so the, the bond issued is not backed by the city or county as far as taxes.
Correct, right. The housing finance corporation essentially is just a conduit issuer to, to receive that kind of tax exemption status.
And you said, to, to a revenue bond, is that right?
Right, revenue bonds, right, multifamily housing revenue bonds.
Revenue based on, it, it, well, unlike a multifamily, what is, how is that? Does the revenue bond, how is it backed by the revenue of that multifamily, I guess?
So, it's, it's essentially the income of, of the rental income that is being achieved at, at the apartment complex.
Okay, that's, that's what you should back that.
Right, correct.
And is it, is it issued, the, the housing finance corporation, is it per project? Or is there a, or could it be county-wide? The housing finance corporation would be county-wide and, and project or, or?
Yeah, so the, the housing finance corporation would essentially be county-wide. The issuance of the bonds would be project-specific, correct, yes, sir. We could come back and do another several hours of presentation on, on the bond program. And it's all through the, there's a, the bond review board through the state, and there's different allocations that are made each year. So, happy to do that another time as well.
I was just gonna say, it sounds like the sales tax from the new bells or anything like that.
No, no, it's, it's specific, it's, it's through the, there's a private activity bond program. And then there's allocations that are set up through the state, so there's a whole application process that developer does to apply for the specific project. And then it's all secured by that specific project. And same for if we're talking about conventional financing where there's no bonds at issue, if there's a loan made to finance the project, again, it's only recourse to the project. There would never be a situation unless really we didn't do our jobs correctly where the, you know, the housing finance corporation would be responsible for repayment. It would all be, the, the loan is secured by the project and is expected to be repaid by revenues from the project.
As long as you're answering questions, I have one that goes back to page one, so sorry. But the very first thing you talk about, the corporation and all the property it owns are exempt from license fees, recording fees, and all other taxes imposed by the state. And it includes the sales and ad verum property taxes as an exemption too. Where is our benefit if this property is going to be developed and we're not going to get the sales and ad verum? Or am I misreading this?
No, so it's, it's correct that the property would be exempt from those taxes. So, the, the property itself would be exempt from the ad verum taxes. And then sales tax would be any materials that are used in the construction of the project or rehabilitation of the project could qualify for sales tax. What Megan and Hilltop do in their role is they run a whole public benefit analysis where then they, I'll let you describe it anyway.
No, no problem. Yeah, so the, the benefit that the housing finance corporation would receive back would be the various fees that we claw back within the, the, the transaction. If you're an issuer of, of the private activity bonds, you would get an issuance fees as well just for being in that role. And that, that is present whether you're in the partnership to allow for the abatements or if you're just the bond issuer. There's those fees, there's other fees such as annual lease payments, which we typically estimate how much the exempt taxes will be over, you know, long-term period, fifteen-year period, et cetera, calculate, you know, a percentage of, of fee based off that. That would go back to y'all.
That would go back to the government entities?
The housing finance corporation. And then, as a housing finance corporation, if that is, you know, we all choose to establish, then you would assume, you know, have policy guidelines as to how you would want to reinvest that back into the community, whether that's, you know, various single-family initiatives. We've had clients, you know, donate to Habitat for Humanity, scholarships. We've had donations directly to school ISDs because there, it is hundred percent tax exempt. That does include school districts and school taxes. So, we've had housing finances paid directly, what we call a payment in lieu of taxes directly to the school district or if it's, you know, to the city. So, it's kind of a, you know, varies. Other benefits are, you know, social services that could be offered at the, the communities such as, you know, after-school programs for children, food pantries, financial literacy classes. You know, the goal is, you know, multifamily is the, the stepping stone to single-family, you know, home ownership. So, we do see a lot of housing finance corporations that do try to have social services to kind of encourage people. Not only are they hopefully receiving rental savings versus if this was, you know, just a standard market rate property, they try to also kind of reinvest back into the residents as well.
Thank you.
And these are great questions, so please feel free to, to jump in at any time. So, I'm, I'm gonna go on to slide seven where we talk about, you know, what the, the requirements are to create this, you know, attainable housing. In order for the housing finance corporation to own and participate in this type of project, under statute, at least ninety percent of the units have to be reserved for occupancy for persons of low and moderate income. So, moderate income is a level that would be set by the housing finance corporation's policy. We see clients handle it different ways, typically something between one hundred and twenty percent to one hundred and forty percent of AMI. But then there's often deeper targeting. If the HFC is, is a bond issuer, it's a firm requirement. But in, in most cases, as a policy requirement, fifty percent of the, the units in a multifamily development would also need to be reserved for, for families that earn less than eighty percent of the area of median income. And we have a chart on page eight that kind of outlines the different income bands. Many HFCs choose to target even deeper and try to get, you know, at least ten to twenty percent of the units in the development at sixty percent area median income. But it can, you know, vary depending on policy and, and the type of project that the HFC might choose to entertain.
Right. I'd say generally, you know, your tax credit deals that are issued by TDHCA, those deals primarily target those making sixty percent of area median income and lower. The kind of conventionally financed, what we call workforce, is your, you know, your central worker is making between sixty to eighty percent of area median income. So, depending on how it's financially structured will kind of really drive to also the affordability requirements as well. Also mentioned, you know, these are, these transactions are, you know, documented and structured where they are income limits driven. And due to the income limits, there's also rent limits based off those income limits. I will say just Hilltop in general on those conventionally financed transactions where, you know, fifty percent of the, the units are deemed to be, you know, restricted or affordable, we also incorporate additional restrictions on rental, rental rates. So, for example, if, you know, the naturally occurring market rate rents here in Rockport is, for example, falling underneath like eighty percent of area median income, we require additional rental savings to ensure there's actually rental savings occurring. So, we write into the regulatory agreements, which is the enforceable document for, for these requirements of there has to be a ten percent discount to market rate rent. So, ensuring that there is some rental savings that the tenants will be, will be experiencing.
So, on slides nine and ten, you know, if, if, you know, Chapman and Hilltop in our role as advisors to an HFC, it just describes some of the things that we would be responsible for doing. As you can kind of get a sense from the, you know, forty slides we have here, these are pretty complicated transactions. So, we, you know, typically guide the transaction. I think Tim at Hilltop always likes to say you can think of us as like the additional staff of the housing finance corporation. I mean, some of the larger ones in Texas have, you know, one or more dedicated staff members, but many are smaller and maybe only do a project every couple of years or as the community needs dictate. So, whatever, you know, the, the range of activity is, the typical things that we would do aside from, you know, guiding the initial setup of the HFC would be negotiating any of the documents. There's typically a memorandum of understanding that's prepared at the very outset of a transaction that just outlines the expected terms between the developer and the HFC. And then as, you know, additional parties and partners come into the transaction with the lender, and there's typically an equity investor, there's additional documents that we, you know, negotiate and draft and prepare, any resolutions or supporting materials that the governing body would need. You know, we handle that. And, you know, as we kind of outline Chapman, we're, my team is situated within our public finance team at Chapman, but, you know, we have partners who are very experienced in the issuance of bonds and tax matters and partnership governance. So, just bringing kind of all that experience together to help, you know, govern these transactions. And I'll let Megan talk a little about the role of the financial advisor.
Absolutely. So, our role is primarily, we're, you know, kind of the interface between the housing finance corporation and the developer. So, we're communicating between the two parties. Our interest is with the housing finance corporation. We do have fiduciary duty to the HFC. However, we, you know, work with the developer just as much and, you know, coordinate with them. So, we review any type of proposals that they are presenting to, to the housing finance corporation, you know, gather due diligence information, financials, what they're looking to propose, rental, the unit mix, affordability levels, fees, things of that nature. We estimate, you know, if it's an existing property or, or new construction, we look at the tax impact of, of, of the development if there is a, a tax exemption that is being requested. And then kind of determine what would be appropriate fees and affordability requirements depending on, you know, what type of structure it is. And, you know, report that back to the HFC and, you know, kind of give you the, the pros and cons of proceeding with the transaction versus not. We also, so we kind of call that our public benefit analysis. We also assist with the drafting of, of, of documents with, with legal counsel, with, you know, everything from the memorandum of understanding, look at the bond docs, loan docs, partnership documents, and make sure, you know, between the financial advisor and, you know, Chapman and legal counsel that the HFC is, you know, protected in, in every which way and, and all business agreements are, are documented correctly.
So, the next several slides, this is where I, I'm not gonna go very deep into the weeds, but the, the overall concept for the partnership structure here is that it would, through the participation of the housing finance corporation in this partnership structure, would qualify the project for that, that tax exemption. And then through that, we'll get into, you know, again, some of the, the return and fees that the HFC might receive. So, once the HFC is formed, again, if you have, let's say, a developer that approaches the HFC and wants to do a project, we would do the memorandum of understanding that would outline the, the terms and conditions. And then proceed to kind of set up this, this partnership structure. So, there would be a separate kind of borrower entity that owns the project. And if you look at slide twelve, it kind of shows then where the, the HFC would fit in with that project. As part of the requirements for meeting, the, the requirements for the ad verum tax exemption, the HFC typically serves in the project as, or, or through a separate affiliate that it would set up, serves in the project as the general partner. It doesn't handle like day-to-day decision-making, except if the HFC has certain policies that it wants control over, like for example, many of the housing finance corporations like to take a more active role in the selection of the property manager. That would be kind of handling, you know, resident issues and day-to-day life at the property. But for the most part, the developer partner is the partner that is managing the, the day-to-day and also, very importantly, providing any guarantees that the lender or equity partners might require. So, again, through the structure, there's not out-of-pocket costs intended to be borne by the, the public partner, which is the HFC. Everything should be, you know, structured so that it's with the developer partner. The, along with, again, qualifying for the tax abatement, the HFC owns the land for the development. So, again, if it's a new development, there would just be, you know, the land or a re, you know, rehab project, it would take title to the land and then the developer would own and, you know, make improvements on the, the apartment complex that's there. That's all, there's a structure in place that's been kind of tested and kind of tested through the courts to meet the requirements of the ad verum tax exemption to show that the HFC, even though it's in this private partnership with the developer partner and other financing partners, has equitable title to the project, which is the, the key for the tax exemption. So, the, there's a groundly structure in place where the HFC, at the end of the ground lease, would have technically a reversionary right to own the whole project. Typically, these projects, just due to the life cycle of needing to be, you know, just you think about like a home after fifteen, twenty years, need some updates and upgrades. There's, you know, usually kind of a refinancing and recapitalization pro, process that occurs. But, you know, some HFCs are interested in more owning the projects more directly. So, that could be, you know, something, just as we're, you know, thinking about the different policies and practices that you might want for your HFC, you know, what are the important goals? Is it kind of ultimate long-term ownership? Is it, you know, short-term, just getting, you know, meeting the immediate needs of, of attainable housing in the community? Do we want to focus only on new construction? Do we want a mix of new construction and rehabilitating existing housing stock? There's a lot of different ways through this structure and through this tool that it can be used to, you know, adapt and meet the needs of the community. So, again, happy to answer any more detailed questions on. So again, happy to answer any more detailed questions on these slides. I think we're probably pushing the limits of our time here, and I want to make sure Megan can talk anymore about, you know, the typical fees, which is on page nineteen, I think to the earlier question about kind of, you know, the benefits of participating in the structure. This outlines it a little bit more.
Right. So, you know, on the, on the left side of that page, typically within these transactions, there is a developer fee that's being received, so the Housing Finance Corporation-
Which page would you identify, please?
Uh, nineteen.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. A, a developer fee that is present in these transactions, so the Housing Finance Corporation would typically be entitled to a split of that. We do build in a, a partnership management fee of ten thousand dollars, usually increasing by three percent annually, and that's just to account for any administrative, you know, cost, accounting costs, whatever the Housing Finance Corporation would incur because of the participation in, in this, this partnership. You know, they would also receive a percentage of cash flow, and usually we like to put that as a fixed payment where there's, you know, we have a stake in the ground and it doesn't, it's not cash flow dependent per se versus, or, you know, unpredictable depending on how the property cash flows. We also build in a sale refinance proceeds splits. Typically, we, we aim to achieve one point five percent of, of gross sales proceeds at, at the time of, of sale. And as Rachel was, was mentioning before, you know, there's these items that are needed for the, for the abatement. You know, one of those items is there's a purchase option, right of first refusal on the property if the HFC would be interested in actually becoming owner of, of the property. I will say, in my team's history, probably nobody's actually exercised that, but that is there and it is needed for the, for the abatement. And then I think as, as Rachel previously mentioned, you know, there is increased oversight and kind of say into this, this property where, you know, if, if things aren't going the way you want it to, you have a pretty good say in stepping in as a partner and kind of getting things fixed. So I'll stop there. Don't think, Rachel, you had any other items? Just a call for any questions?
Yep.
Would it be okay if me to make a couple of-
Sure.
Summary comments. One, like county creation. The city could create a Housing Finance Corporation, the county could create the Housing Finance Corporation, and discussions with the city and the county leadership and the school district. We, at this point, are out there and it would make more sense to do it from a county level perspective, so that we had the entire county encompassed within this, just because of what the geography of Rockport and Aransas County is. Two, there would be, aside from the fact that this doesn't create a liability on the city or the county, there's also, there would be no cost to the city and the county for the creation of this. Hilltop, Chapman, that would be fees that would be paid by developers to fund the operations of the Housing Finance Corporation. And so, there would be no cost that would come to you to create this type of a tool. With regard to transparency, we have been extremely purposeful. We've been having conversations with city leadership, county leadership, and the school district, because we want to make sure, for purposes of just evaluating the tool, that everybody's on the same page. And so, we had invited the school district, but with it being spring break, it was a little awkward for, for today's meeting. But the superintendent has asked me to participate in an upcoming budget meeting on the school board. I've talked with their finance folks, so that they understand what we're talking about. I know you all understand it a hundred percent because all this information is so simple, and it's, it's a lot of information, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands. For us to move forward, I thought it was incredibly important, and we have our taxing entities all at the table, talking about this and evaluating this with regard to the impacts and the potential benefits of what this tool could create.
Did you ever find out, so, these properties, it's off the tax rolls, but they're going to be appraised?
Correct.
They're going to have a value, so does it, how does it affect recapture?
The school district's perspective on it, just to simplify, is the community benefit to them would be if we could get some family moving into these properties, and get more students in the seats to directly impact the recapture of the property that they need. In talking with their finance folks, we've had kind of a high-level conversation with regard, and I think frankly, once the school district realized that there really wasn't any role for them in terms of approval or what have you, they're really weighing more on housing students.
Housing to get families.
Right.
Kids, but, but some seeds here.
Yeah.
Kids and seeds.
The last thing I would say is that we do have a potential project in the wings that it took me a little while to understand, but it is a housing for rent, rent project that could be coming forward if we move forward with the Housing Finance Corporation, that could directly utilize this. But the concept, and again, we just wanted to introduce the Housing Finance Corporation concept today, but in working with different developers and having these conversations across the board, there could be a real project where we could see a property or a project developed where it could have multifamily duplex and single-family homes, all available for rent within the criteria established with regard to the rent that would be paid by these, by these folks. So, this I think is a real opportunity for us. My perspective, this is where we really hit the workforce of the service sector, is by being able to try and create some properties where they actually are affordable and they're not markedly rentless. Thanks so much for the presentation.
Realistically, would that more likely be rental properties versus homeownership?
Hundred percent. And again, that goes back to, you know, I wish there was a silver bullet where we could have one project solve it all. But the biggest part for me, what I'm looking at, is kind of a roadmap, creating a baseline, so that if you opt to do a three-eighty, three-eighty-one, then we have something that if a future developer comes in and says, "Well, maybe I'm willing to build lower-priced housing," then we already have a process in place to evaluate and to, to look at going forward. Likewise, with the Housing Finance Corporation, if there's another developer that wants to do a project that fits more with the needs of where our community is, as opposed to just maximizing profit, then we have a tool that's ready to go, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we move forward.
I, I realize this is very complicated, and thank you for sharing what you did with me a week ago, so that I could at least start to familiarize myself with it. And I'm not even going to pretend I fully understand it. But I will tell you that I have just a mental problem with the fact that we aren't going to encourage property to be developed, and we're not going to collect sales tax or ad valorem tax on that property. I just, I'm going to have a hard time explaining that to anyone who asks, "What do we think we're doing?" And maybe there's something in here, and I'll certainly go through here and look at it some more, but just at first blush, it's a hard pill.
Megan touched on it, if I ever wanted to be able to go into the city manager's office again, where I'll be leaning towards, and, you know, as it relates to the developer agreements, and I think we have to push extremely hard on the payment and rule of taxes, so that we can have revenues coming back to the city and the county as a part of the development agreements, that help pay for some of those basic services and things that go back to the general funds of the city and the county, so that you are getting some financial benefit out of these, and it's not just social services.
That's, that's kind of what, piggyback on Commissioner Rizzo's comment, that's what I was going to ask, is where is the benefit for the city or the county if we do lose all that opportunity for the, the ad warm and impact fees and, and other options of, of gathering fees for us? And it's, it's forever, right? And once it goes to the Housing, the Housing Finance Corporation, it's, it's off the tax rolls for, for life.
Right. So long as the Housing Finance Corporation is involved in, in the partnership.
So they're, in that development-
That's the big contractor. Right. Yeah. So, I mean, the, the ground leases can be for a long period of time. I mean, a, a market term can be ninety-nine years. Some Housing Finance Corporations do a shorter time period between forty-five to seventy-five years. These, but there are sale rights within the agreements as well. So I think sometimes depending on what the developer and investor team are looking for, they might come in anticipating to, you know, look to sell in ten to fifteen years. If there was ever a sale where the Housing Finance Corporation was no longer a part of the project, then it would be placed on to the tax rolls unless there was some other qualifying reason for it not to.
The, the ask isn't typically for, "Help me provide infrastructure and roads and streets and sewer for, for this project." It's just, I'm not, I'm off the tax rolls for, for life.
That creates the financial-
That, that creates, there's the financial-
Provide down the cost of the rental. And that's, you know, just for clarity, the biggest benefit to looking at something like this is providing workforce housing that we've talked about for twenty years as a community, but we've never figured out how to present it. We've never created-
Going to get this way, I guess not artificially, but the, the intention of it is to drive the cost down for the developer to be able to use the market rate or, or the, whatever the, market rate, I guess.
Drive the cost of the rent down.
Yeah.
So if you look in this, and it's pretty close, but Pearl Point today for a two-bedroom is going to average somewhere between seventeen hundred and nineteen hundred dollars a month. With the Housing Finance Corporation on the construction, you can, you can make those two bedrooms available for twelve or thirteen hundred dollars a month. And if you want a one-bedroom or a three-bedroom, so that is the benefit that goes to the potential user, is that you buy down the cost of that monthly rent and actually present a product where our baristas or our waiters or, you know, the-
Parts of the camp.
Economic developers. And frankly, that's one of the bigger concerns that I have overall is, you know, we're an economic development corporation. We're looking for ways to expand and diversify the tax base. We're looking for ways to create quality jobs. One of my biggest concerns is if we don't figure out this workforce housing and start doing something about it, we potentially could end up either restricting the amount of new development that can come in because they can't find the workforce. We have a property right now that's been purchased that was supposed to be open that hasn't opened because they're not convinced they can find the workforce. Worse, is we open up a new project and all of a sudden, for argument, Judge Garza opens up a new business and he starts attracting existing workers for a buck more an hour. And now we see just the trend that we've already seen, the number of days that restaurants are open, the number of hours that stores are open continue to decline because we don't have enough workforce to go across.
Last question, I promise for me. Is this, is this any way associated with or related to HUD or Section Eight housing? Is this, not, not about-
Public housing, Section Eight housing is typically what you see with housing authorities. We don't have one here, there's one in Corpus Christi. Housing authorities play a different role. The closest that I can see, I, I went to Eastlake Village one time in Atlanta, probably the best example of a mixed-use development, where they created a, a community where they had public housing, tax credit housing, and market rate housing, all interspersed within the development. It actually is bookended by two PGA Tour Championship golf courses. The redevelopment that has occurred has been exponential, and it's been not just the site of where the development occurred, but then around the area, development has been able to grow from there. So, again, when we look at the palette of what we're trying to create in terms of that, that playbook, you know, getting more workers to be able to live, to live, afford to live and work in Rockport in Aransas County, gives us more opportunities for other business development activities that we're looking for as we speak.
Thank you, sir.
Regarding new development, would, like, the city still be eligible to, for developer impact fees and things like that, that we, or would they be relinquished from that responsibility as well?
I think that's something we've worked with the Housing Finance Corporation in the setup of the development agreements. I think there's going to be kind of a fine line. One of the things that I've talked, when we've had conversations about this, I think it's important to remember too, kind of the overall perspective. Our housing studies show over three thousand units of planned residential development on the books today. It shows that the city has averaged two hundred new housing permits annually for the last five to seven years. When we're talking about a project for the Housing Finance Corporation, it would be a microcosm of the overall marketing scheme, or, I got in trouble for using, I think I used game last time. It's not a scheme. But in terms of the overall picture, this is a finite number of units that would come into the marketplace. And so, the trick I think is going to be, what, just like the development agreement, is working with the org and the county's leadership in drafting and suggesting and working with the Housing Finance Corporation Board, how we extract the benefit back to make the city and the county receive benefit, but maintain it so it's economically viable to produce the end product, if that's one of our goals, is to once and for all produce some affordable middle-income workforce, attainable housing.
So say there's new development, infrastructure to support the new development, city and county don't receive anything for the, the new development, but we're still obligated to support the infrastructure that supports the development. So where's the benefit in that sense of infrastructure? Because we're still going to be responsible for supporting that infrastructure.
So the traditional model is the developer is responsible for the infrastructure inside the development. City and the county, depending on, really the city, is responsible for the infrastructure to the location. That is going to be part of that return on investment and cost-benefit analysis that Hilltop would perform in evaluating projects.
And do you have, can you provide us information with other similar maybe developments and agreements so that we can see that? Because it needs to look, be looked at in a short-term and long-term view on cost efficiency, I guess.
Yeah. I think we can provide some example documentation. I do, one comment on the impact fees, just from our experience with, you know, having developers request waivers of these impact fees. Mainly, that's kind of up to the city and, you know, their willingness to, to waive various fees like that. We'll say, you know, also kind of depends on how, how good the negotiations are going on the partnership fees with the HFC for participation partnerships. So, it's really kind of up to, you know, cities termination of how much willing they're, they're willing to, to give to, to create this housing.
All right. Well, I just want to, Jeff, when he looked at me and said Judge Garza's going to build, I thought you were going to say courthouse. But I just, I wanted to, Jeff, I wanted to make, so this Housing Finance Corporation, it's taken off the taxes, so we're not collecting. But a housing authority, that's a straight-up burden. We're, we're paying for something, right?
So a housing authority is tax exempt as well.
Okay.
A housing authority also has the additional social services burden in terms of providing social services to the residents within the housing authority.
So it is, it's a burden.
So that would be a burden on-
Right.
On the local government, or, on the housing authority to, to fund.
My, my experience, and I'm, I'm not a housing expert, I won't act like I am. My most recent experience was when we tore down five hundred and sixty-nine units of public housing in Galveston at Kirk County. Housing authority, it became a civil war battle between the fair housing advocates, the housing authority, the state. When it was rebuilt, they decided that they were going to basically contract it to a third party, which was the best decision that was ever made, because now a third party is responsible for managing it. They created a mixed-income development, and as part of the deal, the developments, the developer provided a number of social service amenities. But it does create a burden with regard to additional services that are needed in the community that I think we need to be extremely mindful of.
All right. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all.
Was that, that's it? All right. Thank you, city, for, for hosting this, and I appreciate that we get to hear the same message on the- same meeting. They're not two meetings with us, two meetings with you. Thank you, Jeff.
The only thing I would ask is whatever considerations you all have, next steps with regard to building development project, next steps with whether or not you want to talk more about the Housing Finance Corporation? I've been trying to coordinate with the county judge, the mayor, the city manager just as a small group to kind of see if it even made any sense. But if that could be shared with me at some point, and we're happy to facilitate continuing to try and have these types of dialogues to evaluate.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And for the benefit of the folks sitting out there saying, what are they doing now? You need to know that it takes action by the commissioner's court, the city council, this doesn't happen without you knowing it and the newspaper writing about it and so forth. So don't think that there's a lot, there's a lot of things that we have to study and look at. I mean, they're looking at some of the material I got today. It's a little bit new to me too, like it is to some of our commissioners. But it does give us an opportunity to look at the possibility of getting housing for people, to get people back into our town that left because of the hurricane and they didn't have a place to live and can't afford to find one right now. And that is important to us too. So thank you for being here. If no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion, do I have a second? We're adjourned.